Good evening, everybody. At this time when we call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees regular meeting for Wednesday, October 8, 2025, we see flies in respect to the flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, in the absence of Supervisor Curtis, I need to get a motion and a second to take a roll call vote to appoint a temporary chair for tonight's meeting.
I'll make the motion to appoint Joe Ferrari as the temporary chair for tonight's meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Trustee Colvin, second by Trustee Shapiro, to appoint Joseph Ferrari as the temporary chair for tonight's meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the board, okay, the motion carries. Joseph Ferrari, you're now acting chairman. Board members, Ms. McCollough, can you please note the role?
Noted, there is a quorum.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. Mr. Shapiro, we'll need a motion to approve the agenda. We would like to move item 10 up to 6 and move everything else down accordingly.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda, moving item 10 up before item 6 and everything down.
I'll second it.
Motion by Trustee Colvin, supported by Trustee Shapiro, to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Then motion carries. Board members, for your consideration, is item 5, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second it.
Motion by Trustee Colvin, second by Trustee Wagner, to approve the consent agenda as presented. This requires a roll call vote, please click right. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Joseph Ferrari?
Yes.
Click right, yes, Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Thank you, board members. We're on to the new item 6, which is Fire Department, my oath of office for Logan Blankenbur. Chief?
Good evening, board members. Yeah, finally, after two years plus, we're now going to be fully staffed at our budgeted amount of personnel, so that is good. And again, Logan was one of our homegrown, actually began as one of our part-time paid-on-call members, legacy of that was on the department years ago as well. But now he is coming onto us as a full-time firefighter paramedic. He was with us for a little bit, left because he received a job offer in Shelby, and then finished his medic stuff and wanted to come back home to us, and we still had the position open. He interviewed and did really well, and here we are tonight. So I'd like to go ahead with swearing him in, if that's all right with you folks.
Please do.
Logan, come on up. You want him facing you or you want him facing, which way, what's gonna be easiest for you?
Do you two face each other? So then CJ can bear the picture, please.
All right, repeat after me. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your names.
Aye, Logan Blankenbur.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Then I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Then I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter and ordinances of the Charter Township of Oxford.
And the Charter ordinances and the Charter Township of Oxford.
I will recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith and trust.
I'll recognize the badge of my, the badge of the office.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
I will honor and respect the mission.
I will honor and respect the mission.
Values.
Values.
Goals.
Goals.
And policies of the Oxford Fire Department.
And policies of the Oxford Fire Department.
I will serve the Township of Oxford with honesty.
I will serve the Township of Oxford with honesty.
Fairness.
Fairness.
And dedication.
And dedication.
I will fulfill the responsibilities of Oxford firefighter paramedic.
I will fulfill the responsibility of Oxford firefighter paramedic.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. That's all we have, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take a five, couple minute recess, take some pictures with our new firefighter. We're in recess right now.
Be more cordial, that's what we're doing.
Board members, come on back up.
I mean, I don't, I'm, I mean, I don't speak, but just like, our jobs don't interact much. Right, right. He was so, so, they look busy, right?
Board members, next on our agenda?
Wait a minute, Joe.
Is a presentation by Dr. Tanya Milligan, Oxford Community Schools, an upcoming election proposal. Billigan?
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Is the green light on?
Green light on? Press it.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, good.
Good evening, thank you for having me this evening. I'm Tanya Milligan, the superintendent of Oxford Community Schools and a resident of the school district. I have with me one of my own Board of Trustees, Ian Atchison. She is here to support this presentation, so thank you for being here, appreciate you. I also want to thank Jack Curtis, I know he couldn't be here this evening, but he was instrumental in helping me get my presentation together and make sure I got all my documents in on time, so thank you to Jack, Kobe's feeling better. So I'm here this evening to share some information with you about the two proposals that will be on the ballot this upcoming November 4th. A 21 mil operating millage and a 1.0 sinking fund millage. Hopefully, as Jack described it, you should have a folder that has three documents in it, is that accurate? Yes? Okay, great.
It's in the board packet.
It's in the board packet, fantastic, okay. The three documents that you have, the first one is some general information. This is about the two proposals. On top is the operating millage and on the bottom is the sinking fund. The second is a high-level overview of how the money from the sinking fund will be used over the next 10 years. And the third, for people who love spreadsheets, this is for you. This is, the spreadsheet goes into greater detail regarding the monies that would be spent from the sinking fund over the 10 years. So I'd like to start with the general information document first. So to better understand the operating millage, I need to break down how schools are funded. First, the state decides how much a school district will receive per student, and this is referred to as the foundation allowance, and currently it stands at $10,050 per student. Now although the state sets the foundation allowance, it doesn't pay the full amount. It pays only a portion and expects the remainder to be collected from local businesses through an 18 mil operating millage. Our voters previously approved an 18 mil operating millage in 2017, but due to something called the Headley Amendment, this amount can be cut each year depending upon inflation. Currently, our schools are only receiving approximately 17.3 mils at a loss of almost $250,000 each year because the state does not make up the difference. The operating millage will restore funds lost due to the Headley rollback and bring our funding up to the amount the state expects. The operating millage, also known as a non-homestead millage, only applies to businesses, rental properties, and vacation homes, but results in a no-tax increase for homeowners on your primary residence. Now to avoid some confusion, the ballot, when you go to vote, will say 21 mils, but that doesn't mean we'll ever collect 21. By law, the most we can ever collect is 18. It just gives us a cushion against future Headley rollbacks, so we don't need to come back to the voters every couple of years. Money from the operating millage covers everyday essentials such as teachers, programs, and classroom needs. The second proposal on the information sheet is the sinking fund millage, which is different from the operating millage. It's like a savings account for building upkeep, repairs, buses, and technology. Without a sinking fund, our district has to use classroom dollars to pay for costly repairs. The sinking fund is designed to take care of our current facilities and make improvements where needed. If you look at the other two documents, you can see our plan for how we will use these sinking fund dollars throughout the district over the next 10 years. It's important to note that our schools are strong anchors of the community and they belong to all of us. Research shows that strong schools help strengthen home values and that for every $1 invested in schools, property values often rise by more than a dollar in return. Your vote shapes the future of our schools and our community. I encourage you to take the time to learn more about the proposals by going to our millage website at oxfordschools.org/millage. This website has several videos to help better understand the proposals, answers to frequently asked questions, informational documents, including the three you have here, and a sinking fund cost calculator to determine how much this proposal will cost you each year. For example, my home is currently valued at approximately $250,000. When I put this in the calculator, I see that the millage will cost me approximately $125 a year. On November 4th, remember that these are your schools, your community, and that your vote matters. I appreciate your attention and I welcome any questions or comments you might have.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Billigan?
One quick question, on the sinking fund, you mentioned that it would, you have to use classroom dollars. What does that, what are classroom dollars in this case?
So classroom dollars would be, so how are they used? Is that a question?
What is the source of classroom dollars? Is it that $10,000 per student?
Yeah, it's that $10,050, so the state essentially says, okay, this is how much, if we want a quality education for students, we are saying it's gonna cost $10,050, but the state is saying, we're not gonna pay all of that, we're gonna pay some of that, and then the local businesses will pay the rest. So if that is, if that is rollback because of the Headley Amendment, we're losing that money, and so we have to use other money, the classroom money, to fix things, so.
All right.
It's a little tricky.
And that $10,050 excludes any maintenance on school?
Correct, it's intended to educate kids, so pay for teachers.
Okay.
Pay for curriculum.
Gotcha.
Anything that helps educate kids is what that money is intended for. Great question, thank you.
Board members, any questions? Thank you, Dr. Billigan.
Thank you so much for this evening, I appreciate your time. I also have additional flyers, if anybody's interested, I'll send them back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, we're on to public comment on items on the agenda. If anybody would like to address the board, raise your hand, identify yourself, and you have three minutes to address the board.
All right, thanks.
Sir, come on up.
Do you want a copy? Do you want a copy?
Give her a copy to Clerk Wright, please.
Close the chair, hand it off.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Nice. So my name is Chris Reynolds, and recently I emailed with the Oxford Township Board regarding the elimination of the Oxford Township office hours on Friday and the reduction of the work week, namely from five days a week and 40 hours a week to four days a week and 36 hours a week. I and a bunch of other residents of Oxford Township disagree with this, and we believe the change to the Oxford Township office operating hours is not in the best interest of the township residents and request a review and a resent of this change. I would like this request to be on record and be on the agenda for the next board meeting. I've included condensed copies of the emails I shared with, I think, each of all, each of you, in case you can't find them, a pro and con list from a resident's point of view and signatures of some fellow Oxford residents. I'd like to go over a couple of, I guess, the cons, mostly more than the pros. So if we continue with this, in 2026, the office will be closed for 63 workdays, that's Monday through Fridays, and in '27, the office will be closed for 64 workdays, those are Monday through Friday days. Also, in 2026, there will be 11 weeks where the office is open three days, as well as in 2027, there'll be 11 weeks where the office is only open three days. And as I understand it, wages haven't been adjusted for the 36 hours. So employees here that no longer work 40 hours a week, in essence, get over five weeks of paid time off over the year, paid for by the taxpayers, out of our purse, out of our wallets. In addition, I wonder if the work schedule is not, the work schedule here is not shared with the rest of the township employees. So how long till the rest of the township employees ask for, in quotes, equal treatment, that they would like to work four days as well? Some can, some can't, but I don't know that that's, it's not something that's maybe been addressed or not been addressed. And then I guess, finally, I was wondering if a four-day, 10-hour-a-day schedule was evaluated, but some people work in Monday through Thursday and some people work in Tuesday through Friday, your employees get the four-day work week, the residents still get the full service. And as we know, government is not manufacturing where you can measure success by the number of widgets you make in an hour or a day or a week. It's a service organization that has to be available when needed, and cutting out one day a week significantly affects how often you are available to the community. So I'll be available if anybody wants to have a discussion with me about this afterwards, but I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Would anybody else like to address the board? There are no further comments, Board trustee comments? Let's start off with Trustee Colvin, please.
Go Tigers.
Clerk Wright?
Yeah, the election will be on the 4th of November. As a reminder, those that are on the permanent ballot list should have received a ballot by now. If you've not received it, please call our office to make sure that you get your ballot at the time. Also, Chamber of Commerce will be having an expo on Tuesday, October 28th. And my last comment is, for those of you that may have been in the community for a while, a longtime elected official passed away this, earlier this month, Clara Sanderson. She served as Oxford Township clerk for several years, maybe the most years of any elected official in Oxford Township, so I just want to bring that up and wish condolences and prayers and thots to their family. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Shapiro?
No comment, other than I will second, Trustee Colvin's comment about the Tigers you want today.
Trustee Wagner?
Everybody have a happy and safe Halloween.
And Trustee Charles?
Well, one thing to start with, I was gone, as you know, last meeting, I was overseas, so I appreciate everyone's good behavior in my absence. I assume good behavior, didn't hear reports. Second thing, the board packet, if you recall, or if you looked in there, I put in there the no-haz report showing what different communities pay. I think that's pretty interesting, because we don't require our residents to pay, and we have one of the highest participation rates of any of the 32 communities, so that's, that's been a success. We get a lot of stuff that shouldn't be dumped in our lakes and in our ground because of what we're doing here, so hopefully we keep, keep that going. And kind of echoing what Mr. Wright was saying about Mrs. Sanderson passing away, very, very sad thing, she's been around for a long time, and for, you know, Bruce and his family, whatnot, his mom, so condolences.
Thank you. I also want to echo what Clerk Wright and Trustee Charles said, very sad news, I worked with Mrs. Sanderson for many years and very sad to hear of her passing. Board members, item 9, second reading, zoning ordinance 67-8.043, text amendments to update Article 11, private roads. Any comments? If not, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve the second reading of the amendments to Article 11 of the Township zoning ordinance as presented and direct the Township clerk to publish such ordinance in accordance with state law.
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Colvin, second by Trustee Shapiro, to adopt the second reading of ordinance 67-8.043, text amendment updates to Article 11. Roll call vote, please. Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee, sorry, Trustee Charles? Call him.
Yeah, I didn't write down the page, I apologize, but I saw Orion on there instead of Oxford on one page.
We can make that minor update. You saw, you saw Orion in the ordinance?
Maybe it was one of the letters I should have written on the page, but just as an FYI.
I'll take a look tomorrow and I'll make sure that, before it goes to publication, that it's all correct.
Okay. Or can we just bill your timeout to Orion? I mean, I'm good for that.
Let's continue the roll call votes.
All right, that's it, go ahead.
I'll start over. Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Charles? Yes. Thank you, board members. Item B, zoning ordinance 67-8.044, text amendments to update Article 3, district regulations for lot-zoned I-1 light industrial and I-2 general industrial. Clerk Wright?
I move to approve the second reading of the Oxford Township text amendments to zoning ordinance 67-8.044, Section 3.7, schedule district regulations, and direct the Township clerk to publish said ordinance in accordance with state law.
I'll second.
Motion by Clerk Wright, second by Trustee Colvin, to approve the second reading of the updated Article 3. Roll call vote, please. Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Ferrari? Yes. Thank you, board members. Item B, zoning ordinance 67-8.044, text amendments to update Article 3, district regulations for lot-zoned I-1 light industrial and I-2 general industrial. Clerk Wright?
I move to approve the second reading of the Oxford Township text amendments to zoning ordinance 67-8.044, Section 3.7, schedule district regulations, and direct the Township clerk to publish said ordinance in accordance with state law.
I'll second.
Motion by Clerk Wright, second by Trustee Colvin, to approve the second reading of the updated Article 3. Roll call vote, please. Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Ferrari? Yes. Thank you, board members. Item 10's already been addressed. The old item 11, Sharp Engineering Report, any questions for Engineer Sharp?
Do you want? I don't have any questions, I just didn't know if he had anything he wanted to bring to our attention in particular.
Anything for you? Okay, we'll move on. Item 11, 13A, Love Inc. requests for contribution. As there's a potential conflict for Trustee Shapiro, we'd like to, and he's requested to abstain from this deliberation, there's a motion that we would like the board to consider. I'd like to make a motion to allow Trustee Shapiro to be recused for any discussion, deliberation, or action on this matter, because his wife serves as the executive director of Love Inc. of North Oakland County.
I'll second.
Motion by Ferrari, supported by Colvin. Roll call vote, please. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And Trustee Ferrari? Yes. Okay, Paul, if you could, can I go in the audience, please?
Do.
Please.
Get my water up. Get out of here.
Okay, board members, we have a request from Love Inc. for contribution. Ms. Shapiro's here to address any board questions. Board members, any questions? Now, could you come up and just give us a brief presentation?
Yes, absolutely.
Just for those who may be unfamiliar.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? All right. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about Love in the Name of Christ of North Oakland County. My name is Patricia Shapiro and I'm the executive director. Also, thank you to Jack for helping me to prepare for this evening, I appreciate that and I hope he feels better soon. Love in the Name of Christ is a nonprofit organization dedicated to supporting our community's most vulnerable residents. Through a wide range of services, including eviction prevention, utility shut-off assistance, clothing and household goods distribution, gift cards, community meals, one-on-one mentoring, counseling, and resource connection, we strive to meet the immediate needs while guiding individuals toward long-term self-sufficiency. If the board chooses to support Love Inc. with a donation, the funds will be used exclusively to serve the residents of Oxford Township, because of course, we do serve all of Oakland County, but we understand those funds would be specifically used for Oxford Township residents. We believe that the strong community partnerships that we have are the key to amplifying our impact. By working together, we can reach more individuals and families who are in need of support and hope. Founded in 2007, Love Inc. was born out of a vision to create a compassionate community where no one goes without life's basic necessities. Since then, we've served over 12,000 neighbors, providing clothing, essential household items, food, rent, and utility assistance, and access to resources that promote empowerment and independence. More than 10% of our support has gone directly to Oxford Township residents historically. Each person who seeks our help is invited to a one-hour intake appointment where we carefully assess the legitimacy of their needs. We also require financial participation from those receiving assistance, which helps foster accountability and sustainability. Our goal is not just to alleviate poverty-related burdens, but to educate and equip our neighbors with the tools they need to thrive. The work we do provides more than just relief, it builds community. We've seen firsthand how a helping hand can transform lives. At Love Inc., we believe in the power of relationships, dignity, and human connection, and we remain deeply committed to continuing this mission with compassion and integrity. Any questions?
Board members, any questions? Trustee Charles?
Approximately how many, here, approximately how many Township residents do you serve?
Since our inception, it's been about 1,400. So since 2007, it's been 1,400. And we're continually looking to extend our reach into Oxford through different community partnerships, so that more people know about us, so they can refer people to Love Inc., so we can do what we do best, and that's vet folks to find out the legitimacy of the need and continue to, to reach more people in the community.
How about currently?
I think so far this year, there have been about 27.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Clerk Wright?
Yeah, there's an agreement in the packet, have you reviewed that? Have you seen that agreement?
I don't believe that I have.
Does this have to go through your board of directors to approve this?
Not necessarily. Jack just said that once I spoke about it and then we can go ahead, because my board just needed to have it in their minutes to propose it, so I'm not quite exactly sure, but my, my board doesn't need to vote on it, no.
Okay. Just sort of uniform, presidential pickups.
Of course.
Just so you know, Pat, if the resolution that our attorney drafted is pretty specific.
Okay.
So you want to make sure that?
Absolutely.
You guys follow all parts of that?
Absolutely.
Okay, board members, I would entertain a motion if there's not any other questions. Clerk Wright?
I move to approve the services agreement between the Charter Township of Oxford and Love Inc. of North Oakland County, an amount of $15,000, and authorize Supervisor Jack L. Curtis to sign the agreement on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
I'll second it.
Motion by Clerk Wright, second by Trustee Charles, to allocate $15,000 to Oxford Love Inc. based on the contract that the Township attorney has provided. A roll call vote, please. Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro? Camp Hope? And Trustee Ferrari? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna invite Trustee Shapiro back up.
Thank you.
Can we vote on that?
It's getting old.
Board members, we're on to item 13B, Employee Health Insurance Monday.
Board members, every year, the Township Board has to decide the funding of the insurance plan that we have in place, and there's three options that we have in front of us tonight. There's a hard cap option, maybe 20 plan, and an opt-out plan. The past years, the Township's been supportive in doing the opt-out plan to allow the Township Board to decide what the contribution is going to be on the coverages for '25, '26. So if there's no further questions, I move that the Charter Township of Oxford exercises the opt-out provision, which allows the local unit of government, the Charter Township of Oxford, to determine the contribution amount for healthcare coverage, healthcare insurance coverage for the '25, '26 plan year.
I'll second.
Motion by Clerk Wright, second by a Trustee Colvin, to approve the motion as read. A roll call vote, please. Trustee Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Thank you, board members. That motion carries. Round item thirteen C, employee health insurance renewal. Clerk Wright?
Yeah, in your packet, board members, is a motion to approve the current plan that's on, in effect right now. So we've had the plan here and it's been effective for several years. So with that, I'll move that the Oxford Township, move that Oxford Township renew the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance for Group zero zero seven zero one one seven nine nine, Division zero 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 Oxford Fire Department, and Group zero zero seven zero one one seven nine nine, Division zero zero two Oxford Township Employees, Group zero zero seven zero one one seven nine nine, Division zero 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 four Oxford Township Employees, Group zero zero seven zero one one seven nine nine, Division zero zero five Oxford Township Employees, with the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue HRA PPO Platinum one thousand five hundred dollar plan effective December one, twenty twenty-five, and authorize Barons Hendricks and Stoy to forward the appropriate paperwork to Blue Cross Blue Shield to activate the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue PPO Platinum fifteen hundred dollar plan. All members enrolled on the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue HRA PPO Platinum one thousand five hundred dollar plan shall contribute five percent of the premium cost effective December one, twenty twenty-five. Also, the Charter Township of Oxford shall fund a health reimbursement arrangement, two thirteen D plan account effective January one, twenty twenty-six, and cover any additional expenses incurred, including but not limited to deductibles, co-insurance, emergency room visits, and prescription drugs. Further, Oxford Township shall renew the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance for Group zero zero seven zero one one seven nine nine, Division zero 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 one Oxford Police Retiree, and Group zero zero seven zero one one seven nine nine, Division zero 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 three Oxford Township Fire Police Retiree, with the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue PPO Platinum two fifty plan effective December one, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
I have a question.
Motion by Clerk Wright, second by Trustee Colvin. Trustee Shapiro?
Is a health reimbursement arrangement, two thirteen D plan, the same as an HSA?
It is not.
Is not? How is it different?
It's an H R.
It's an H R. Health reimbursement plan is where you have the deductible in place. Whatever isn't covered through the insurance comes out of pocket, is reimbursed to the employee. And there's a bank that is established for each individual or each family.
Okay.
And that bank is sixty-three hundred and fifty dollars for a single and twelve thousand seven hundred dollars for a family.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Wright? Okay, Clerk Wright, please call the roll.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Wright, yes. And Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. That motion carries. Item thirteen D, Seymour Lake Road Water Main and Safety Path Project bid award. Trustee Wagner and Supervisor Curtis are kind of handling that at the township end. Trustee Wagner, would you like to kind of give us a brief summary?
So briefly, there were, there were some safety path improvements that needed to be taken care of and also some paving at the Mount Pleasant Cemetery. Bids were sent out and, which were coordinated by Sharp Engineering, and the, they were sent out as a joint effort to help get some efficiencies.
Talking Seymour Lake Road?
Okay. Seymour Lake Road?
I think that's, that was the agenda item, right? Seymour Lake Road?
Yeah.
Seymour Lake Road Water Main and Safety Path Project, item thirteen D.
Oh, oh, I'm on the wrong, I'm on the wrong one.
D as in David.
Don't confuse him with that D.
Gotcha. All right. All right. So this is the, all right. So this is the, this is the previous one. I'm sorry. So again, so bids were requested for the Seymour Lake Road Water Main and Safety Path Project. Again, Sharp Engineering coordinated that bid. And then the low bid came in at two million, two million one hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred and, four hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents. They were the low bid. Sharp Engineering recommends that they, that they handle that.
I move to approve the recommendation from Sharp Engineering to award the Seymour Lake Road Water Main and Safety Path Project to the Ponyo Contracting LLC, the base bid of two million one hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents. This two million one hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents base bid, amount to expense proportionate to Safety Path Fund, two ninety-seven, and the water fund, five ninety-one.
I'll second that. I have a question.
Motion by Treasure Ferrari, second by Trustee Charles. Trustee Shapiro?
Comments after, first and second. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Jim, can you elaborate on the start time of the project and the end time of the project as well?
Yeah, Jim Sharp, Sharp Engineering, Township Engineer. Yeah, the estimated start time for this project is going to be February. We gave the contractors a fairly long lead time on this because we knew that we wouldn't be able to do the safety path paving portion of it during the winter months. We only got a little bit of time left as it is, so we gave them a little bit of lead time. It actually worked to our advantage, I believe, because we had fourteen contractors bid this project. I mean, that's a significant amount. I've never had one that large, to be honest with you. So I think that their, their plan is started in February, and then the estimated completion date is probably around sometime in July, I would say the end of July. So they'll put the water main in during the months of February, March, maybe into April. And then, once the asphalt plants open up and they have some other safety path work to do, they can get that done like May, June, July, in that vicinity. We don't know for sure, but in the, in the proposals, that was one of the considerations. We asked all of the contractors to put their estimated start times, and all of them seemed to, seemed to like that winter start time because it keeps their guys busy so they don't have to lay them off for, for winter months. So yeah, I think it worked out really well, to be honest with you.
How will that affect traffic in the area?
So shouldn't affect how the work is going to be done on the south side of Seymour Lake Road. It should not, other than when we, we will have to cross Sanders Road, and we have a permit from the road commission to shut that road down for just like a day or two, depending on how long it takes. The rest of it will be handled with typical traffic control devices, you know, that have signage up saying workers ahead, but there won't be any actual lane closures associated with the project. So traffic will be able to continue to flow on Seymour Lake Road.
Thank you.
Trustee Charles?
Yeah, to kind of tie with the Trustee Shapiro saying, compliment Mr. Sharp here with the idea originally that our meeting was to talk with contractors about doing this in February. It helps them and reduce the cost. For us, we made a lot of, we saved a lot of money by doing it this, this time of the year, by the way. I don't remember the dollar amount, but it was, it was significant. So I think that's a real positive toward your recommendation. And the coordination was kind of nice, too, because of what you're talking about, you know, putting the water main in and putting that bridge in there and all those kinds of things. It's, it's, it's a real balancing act. So appreciate what Mr. Sharp is going to bring to the table.
The bids were really fairly close, too. Usually, you have a couple that are low, a couple, a lot that are in the middle, and then there's usually one or two outliers, as there was on this particular project. But all in all, the bidding came in very well. We're pretty happy with it. And I, I think that you're going to get, you got a good price on it as well.
Any other questions?
The contract there is well-known and, and well-funded?
So the Ponyo Contracting, yep, they are well-known. They actually were the same contractor that installed the sanitary sewer line along M twenty-four in twenty twenty-four, right? Twenty twenty-four is when we put that in. I'm trying to think of what's going on. We just closed out the contract. But yes, twenty twenty-four in front of Meyer ran all the way up to, you know, past Ray Road and up to the Stony Lake Park up there. So they've done work for the township before. We still did our reference checks. We still always ask for references. You never know when somebody might go, turn south, but yeah, all the references came back very favorable. They have a lot of equipment and the manpower to do the work.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Engineer Sharp? Clerk Wright, can you please call the roll?
Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Thank you, board members. Item thirteen E, twenty twenty-five Safety Path Rehabilitation Mount Pleasant Cemetery Paving Project Award. Clerk Wright, do you want to handle this one?
I'll handle the cemetery part of it.
Please.
Okay, this was a project that was bid in conjunction with the Safety Path because it involved both paving items on there. So for the, as far as the cemetery part goes, we requested the bid to go out for paving of Mount Pleasant Cemetery. And here's a, here's a photo. It's pretty small. Blow it up a little bit here, give you an idea. The area in red is what we're proposing to pave. And the reason why this was brought about is because some of the funeral directors called the township and said, when we have a funeral procession on the existing road, when we pull in, we're done, and we want to leave, we can't leave because all the other families and friends are behind us. So what we're going to do is propose widening out the, the lane there, the drive, and allow, allow the horse to turn around and the procession can follow afterwards. What will happen, though, is, is you can see the red overlaps a lot of existing grave sites in there. So we'll lose approximately, in today's dollars, for selling those graves, about fifty-four thousand dollars in comparison. But as far as peace of mind and assistance to the families and the funeral homes, we felt this is a good idea to actually get this out, get this bid and get this completed this year, right? This month?
That's the intent, yes. But just to clarify, when Clerk Wright says existing grave sites, those are not sold, they are not sold, no burial, they were just, they were just plotted grave sites, is all they are, that they will not be able to sell in the future. No, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it's good to have.
Nobody's getting moved.
And also, correct me if I'm wrong, Engineer Sharp, we're going to have the, this metal drive here, this horseshoe getting some, some gravel or some millings put on it.
We proposed to put asphalt millings in there. That, it's an existing gravel drive, so because of the tree roots and so forth, that would probably heave over time. We just suggested putting some gravel or some, putting some asphalt millings in there.
Yeah, and then I guess, Trustee Wagner, you're on the, on the Safety Path.
Sure. So with, with respect to the Safety Path improvements, we asked Jim Sharp and his team to go out and take a look at the safety paths throughout the township, and he identified a number of areas that needed to be updated and improved and repaired. And so as, as part of this effort, since both these efforts were similar in nature, they were combined into one bid to help get some efficiencies from, from, from the bidding. And that's where we stand today.
I move to approve the recommendation from Sharp Engineering to award the twenty twenty-five Safety Path Rehabilitation and Mount Pleasant Cemetery Paving Project, R and R asphalt, the base bid amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand one ninety twenty. This one hundred seventy-eight thousand one ninety twenty base bid amount to be expensed proportionate to the Cemetery Maintenance Fund, two oh nine, the Safety Path Fund, two ninety-seven.
I'll second it.
Motion by Treasure Ferrari, second by Trustee Shapiro?
I have a question.
To approve the bid? A question?
Relate, not specific to this, but related. What's the responsibility of the township for the headstones that are falling over, discolored and things like that? Is there any township? I would, I drove through today just to check on the project and just noticed a lot of the headstones are, you can't read them, they're covered with stuff. Is there anything that we have?
Clerk Wright, you may know that.
Uh, yes, there, there is, there is some, I guess I can do in our trusty comments I brought, because they're on the subject. I'll let the cat out of the bag here because Supervisor Curtis has been in contact with a University of Michigan faculty member. I'll call it that. I don't know exactly if that's what it is. But they wanted to come out and do a hands-on, I'll call it demonstration of how to clean and preserve headstones and markers in the springtime. We're going to be doing, from what I understand, a, let's say, a presentation at the Oxford Library sometime. So that would turn this individual to see if that's something that could take place. So I don't know if that answers your question or not.
No, it answers my question because like I said, I drove through today just to check on the project and I made that observation. Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please. Clerk Wright? Clerk Wright?
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. Round item F, Cemetery Fencing Installation and Fence Repairs Project Bid Award. Clerk Wright?
Yes, the Cemetery Committee met, and one of the concerns we had was that there was no fencing on the south side of the Oxford Cemetery, which is the side with the, with the mausoleum. And also, there were some other areas that I can pull up on a map here. So what we decided to do was send this out for bid to get fencing quotes. We did receive three back. In your packet, you'll see the quotes that come in there, and they're out, they're all over the board because of the way the bidders bid the project. But as you can see here, highlighted in yellow, we're going to get the whole south side of the Oxford Cemetery fenced in. And some of the reasons why is because there was an encroachment here on the west property line. So we want to get our property in line proper so that when the board is Oxford Oaks and Oxford Bluffs, that everybody knows whose properties who misses a recorded survey. And also on the east line here, that drops over our steep bank. And what happens is when there's a burial, a lot of the spoils get dumped over here. So what we want to do is want to make sure we're not dumping spoils over on the adjacent properties. So we've had it all staked out here on these two lines here. And also here on the north side, we've got about two hundred and ten feet we're going to get this staked as well. The reason we didn't go all the way is because it's natural, there's vegetation, big pine trees, some other vegetation as, as well here, plus the property drops off real steep here. There's, there was a big stone wall here that was put in the water stone project back in the day. And then also, we've got a little fence repair here to do that's at the North Oxford Cemetery. That was destroyed by a big maple tree that fell on the fence and just crushed it. So it's about forty to sixty feet and needs to be repaired for, for that project. So that's what we would like to get approved. So with that, motion in there? Yeah, I got a motion. I'll move to award the Cemetery Fencing Installation and Fence Repairs at the Oxford Cemetery, North Oxford Cemetery Project to OCG Companies in the bid amount of fifty-three thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars. Further, Supervisor Jack Curtis, the last to sign the agreement with OCG Companies on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
I'll second.
Motion by Clerk Wright, second by Trustee Colvin, to award the bid as read. Roll call vote, please.
Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
And Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Board members, that motion carries. Item thirteen G, Planning Commissioner Appointed to the Village of Oxford Planning Commission. Supervisor Curtis has this on the agenda. He's looking for somebody that would like to serve on the township board on the Village Planning Commission. His recommendation is Trustee Wagner, if he's willing.
Sure.
Pending approval by the Village Council, I move to appoint David Wagner to the Village of Oxford Planning Commission. Further, I move to approve the Board Trustees' Resolution Regarding Updated Twenty Twenty-Five Authorized Compensation for Township Planning Commission Members Serving on the Village Planning Commission as presented.
I'll second.
Sorry about that. Motion by Treasure Ferrari, second by Trustee Colvin. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
And Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. Round item thirteen H, pay for appointments by the township board to committees, et cetera. Members at large, Clerk Wright?
Yeah, this, this issue came up because we have, in this case, one individual that has been appointed by the township board, but there's no provision in, in the, in their local agreement or the bylaws to authorize pay for this individual. So, so that's why it's coming to the board so that we can make a provision if we want to pay anybody that's appointed as a member at large. A good example of that would be when the Planning Commission Master Plan had a steering committee of a lot of non-elected representatives on that committee, I'll call it that. So.
I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move that any representative appointed to serve on a board, commission, committee, council, et cetera, by the Oxford Township Board Trustees as a member at large shall be compensated at the same rate of pay as a sitting appointed member for meeting attendance. And further, it is recommended the pay rate for a member at large be included in the annual General Appropriation Act as adjusted annual, and adjusted annually if necessary.
I'll second it.
Motion by Clerk Wright, second by Trustee Shapiro, to approve the, the motion as read. Well, any questions, Clerk? Um, excuse me. Trustee Charles?
Mr. Wright, could you be a little bit more specific about what would be included and what might not be? Because you said et cetera, that's kind of ambiguous, to say the least.
What my point was, okay, when I, when I go down the line, we have boards, we have commissions, we have committees and councils, then I don't know, I put et cetera to say, okay, it's going to encompass anything else that might come up from this board. I mean, if you want to, we send the motion, we'll do another one.
I'm just asking for definition of what et cetera means.
I would say.
Like items.
Yeah.
Well, give me, give me a, for example. I'm just, I'm not against it. I'm just trying to get a little bit more clarity.
I'm out of thoughts here.
Or maybe.
We have a gentleman.
I got, I got four on there, so.
I think I could maybe clarify a little bit. I think maybe like the Master Plan Steering Committee was a committee that was formed for a specific purpose for a very short period of time. So I think maybe that's where the et cetera would come in. Anything like that in the future, we end up forming, because it was just made up of people from the community that volunteered. It wasn't anybody connected with any appointed position or elected position here.
So would we potentially, every time this comes up, approve it, or is this a standing thing? Mr. Wright?
I'd say, in my opinion, it's a standing thing. I might, in my, my thought, if I was to answer, what does et cetera mean? It means anything else might come along in relation to, in this case, these four items.
I look at it, too. We have a gentleman that's been serving on our cable commission for years. Volunteers this time, comes all these meetings. To me, the least we can do is pay him first time to come to the meeting. That's just my take.
Yeah, all I take is, I'm, I'm agreeing with all that stuff. I'm just saying, I would have thought we'd have a little bit more specificity so it doesn't get out of control.
I have a question. I mean, I, I don't think we should, we either have to rescind the motion, but I don't think we should approve a motion with et cetera. We can say and like, or of same kind, or, you know, related to.
Well, let's call this vote to order. Clerk Wright, let's do a roll call vote, please. Clerk Wright, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Charles.
No.
Trustee Shapiro.
No.
Trustee Wagner.
No.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Okay, we, do I like a three-three? Any other motion? Motion fails.
May I suggest replacing et cetera with, in any related subcommittee?
I like that.
Sure. That sounds good.
I'll, I'll make a motion that, move that any representative appointed to serve on a board, commission, committee, council, et cetera, by the Oxford Township Board of Trustees as a member at large shall be compensated at the same rate of pay as a sitting-appointed member for meeting attendance. Further, it is recommended the pay rate, oh, it doesn't even say anything about the et cetera. Recommend the pay rate for a member at large be included in the Annual General Appropriation Act.
He said et cetera, didn't he?
Adjusted annually, if necessary.
You have to redo that motion, because you said et cetera.
No, there's no et cetera in here.
You missed it. Page four sixty-eight.
It's okay.
It's okay, you didn't finish it, so you get a redo.
Nobody supports.
Where's et cetera at?
Here.
Am I just missing it?
Et cetera.
Nobody supports.
Oh, oh, so there it goes.
If there's no second, that motion will die for lack of support, and then somebody can make a new motion.
I move that any representative appointed to serve on a board, commission, committee, or council by the Oxford Township Board of Trustees as a member at large shall be compensated at the same rate of pay as a sitting-appointed member for meeting attendance. Further, it is recommended the pay rate for a member at large be included in the Annual General Appropriation Act, adjusted annually, if necessary.
I'll support.
Motion by Treasure Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Colvin. Roll call vote, please.
Question, question.
It's a question.
So I thought maybe we're, I, I like Brittany's suggestion that we added the, the subcommittee in, in place of et cetera.
Listen, I think committee can, can be interpreted to encompass subcommittees.
That's what I thought.
I was kind of getting in the weeds there, because you do create a lot of subcommittees to deal with a lot of issues. Sometimes you call them committees, sometimes you call them subcommittees. They can fall under that umbrella of committee. I'm comfortable with the motion as presented.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Thank you.[1654.62]